Okay, so. Okay, so I'll start by saying I hope that this is the last fully virtual meeting we have in a while. So next one should be a hybrid, but I'm going to call the meeting to order. And due to the governor statewide disaster declaration relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and current public health guidelines for social distancing, I've determined it's not prudent for members of the village board staff to convene in person for tonight's meeting. Therefore, the members of the village board are attending this meeting by video conference. The same conditions require barring access to public for in-person attendance. In light of those limitations, the public's invited to attend and listen to the meeting through the Zoom platform or by phone as indicated on the meeting agenda. To comply with the Open Meetings Act requirements for virtual meetings, tonight's meeting is being recorded. And if I could ask village clerk Schmidtky to take attendance and make sure everyone can be heard, that would be great. We appreciate it.
Okay, trustee Barowski, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hello, trustee Kritzmeyer, can you hear me?
Yes, hello, Michelle, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Here finally.
Trustee Micho, can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Trustee O'Connor, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Trustee O'Reilly.
He's probably absent, so.
Okay. Trustee Tanucci, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it. And it's great, Rita, that we can hear you too, so even better.
Yes.
Anytime I can help.
You're awesome. Punctually, we can hear you. All right, pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
All right, welcome, everyone. The first item on the agenda are homeowners, visitors. Is anyone from Indian Creek Estates here? Helen Dorn, are you here? All right, I do see Michael Kiefer from Cobblestone. Mike, thanks for being here.
Thank you. We always appreciate the opportunity.
Do you have anything to share with us? How's it going in Cobblestone?
We're surviving. Everything seems to be going very well. No comments, concerns, or questions from our homeowners. So thank you very much. I would have to assume that everything is going well.
That's good to hear. That's good to hear. So anything else to share?
No, everything I think is going very well. I get the only comments that we've had over the last year, I would say, is, you know, we've appreciated how you addressed in the school did a very, very nice job with their solar field out there. So everything, I think everybody is very, very pleased here. And so we really appreciate the support that was provided by the village.
Yeah, there's a screening coming in. Okay, I haven't been over there in a little bit. Do you see it coming in?
Yeah, everything is working out really well. The neighbors that are directly affected have no concerns whatsoever at this time, so.
That's great news. Glad to hear that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I know it was a process for all of us.
It was a little intense, I'll say that.
But no, we made it through. And I have to say, you know, the school district, and we sent them a note on it also separately, that they did a very nice job and addressed it very, very well.
That's great. Great to see. I know, you know, we never did. I think there was going to be some kind of a ribbon cutting or something. I don't think it ever happened. But COVID kind of, you know, put a kibosh on that. So maybe something will be done in the future. I don't know.
Yeah, they did a nice job. And, you know, it should be a benefit, a big benefit for them, so.
That's great. Well, if you don't have anything else, I'll move to the public comment section. And I really appreciate you joining. And thanks for what you do.
Thank you guys for everything.
All right, thanks, Michael. So next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here that has any public comment? If not, then we didn't. Yep, go ahead, Chris.
I do have a public comment. Just wanted to recognize that today is International Women's Day. And just want to thank my female colleagues on the board. And for that matter, all the women living in Long Grove, just wanted to recognize them all.
Thank you.
Kind thanks.
Any other public comment? I'll keep us moving. I do not see anyone here from the sheriff and/or countryside or Long Grove Fire Protection Districts. Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. President, I just received a text from Sergeant Amber from the Lee County Sheriff's Department. He's still trying to get on, but he has nothing to report at this time.
Okay. I mean, does anyone have any questions for him? We can either let him have a nice night with his family or we can ask him to join later and ask if he has anything for us. Anyone have anything for Sergeant Ryan Amber?
Nothing here.
Is there anything that we should know or that we should communicate during spring break when people are away?
Do the house watch.
Yeah, we'll do the house. Send out communication regarding the house watch. And then I'll check with Sergeant Amber to see if there's any law enforcement announcements they would like us to disseminate through either social media or through our electronic newsletter.
Do we have dates on spring break, by the way?
I don't know when they are, but I think they vary a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
I've grown out of it, but I suspect it's probably in two weeks or.
It's March 20th through like the 27th.
Okay, I brought that up. Thank you for that. I brought that up for a reason because of the potential public hearing that week that we're scheduling. Might not be good timing.
All right, thanks, Chris, for bringing that up. Anything else from the public comment perspective? Amy, thanks for that information. Appreciate that. If not, then we'll move to the village planners' report. I don't think Amanda is here tonight either, right?
She is not, Mr. President.
I think that. I think that the, I mean, we can move to the next item on the agenda because I believe that her report covers the next item on the agenda. Which is consideration in ordinance approving minor amendments to the Long Grove Commons Plan Unit Development, which would be memorializing the AC's approval of the internally illuminated signage for the Soft Wave Fish Company at 3976 Illinois Route. It says 23. I guess that should be, is it 20? Yeah, it's 23. It's half day road. That's where the smoking teas used to be. And there's a new business in there. Now, I don't know, Jeff or Greg, if you want to present anything on this or not? Or does the board have any questions regarding, you know, the sign and the information that's in your board packet?
Mr. President, I would just point out that the village board some time ago allowed for illuminated signs very much into confined to certain specifications for that portion of the village simply because it's difficult to see the businesses from 22 or Old McHenry Road. The sign that, and I refer to it as a lens, the sign that is going up is simply just replacing the sign that existed from, I believe was a former barbecue.
Smoking teas.
Restaurant that was there. So it's just, it's just replacing the sign that's over there.
You know, I do have a quick question. The fish company, I noticed their hours are from till 6:00 PM. They're open six days a week. So to the, and the grooming place next door, and I think Dunkin' Donuts have illuminated signs. Are those on, I haven't noticed, you know, I drive there, but I don't notice it. Are those on past 6:00 PM during, you know, through the night? Or do they switch over to interior lights being on?
I, trustee O'Connor, I, to be honest with you, I do not know. I can find out. I would assume a business wanting the illumination would keep their lights on until they close their business for the evening. But to be honest with you, I don't know, and I can find out for you.
Yeah, you know, how many times you drive past and I don't even pay attention, but it was just curiosity.
I think they're on at night. I think they are, Rita.
I know smoking teas was, but that's because they were open till like nine or 10, you know? I'm just curious.
Yeah. Okay, are there any other questions or does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Micho. Michelle, if you would be so kind to take the roll call vote.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Barowski.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
And trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried.
So. Can I ask a question? I mean, it's not, it's related, but it wasn't part of that vote. Would it be possible to maybe relook at that illuminated sign ban? And kind of think about it more universally, just dust it off at some point? I don't know who would, would that be the Architecture Commission and when they would have bandwidth to do so?
You can certainly place it on the agenda as a work item for the, for the AC.
Thank you. I mean, if I'm a minority on the board, then I wouldn't ask them to go through the exercise. It just seems like that ought to be something as we look at economic development and different districts and so forth, maybe having a more uniform thought about it or a fresh thought about it would be helpful.
No issues from my perspective to always take a look at it, so just need to put some structure to it, so.
Get that addressed on the next agenda.
All right, we'll keep ourselves moving then. Thank you, Ann, for that. So the next one is, you know, we asked Vic to draft up the appropriate paperwork to change the code to allow for front-load garages on 43% of the homes in the Orchards of Long Grove Plan Unit Development. So now we have the paperwork in front of us for that. And, you know, we voted to do that three to two at the last meeting. So I guess I'll ask any, any comments on this? Or otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Just a question, Bill, if I may.
Yep.
I just wanted to reconfirm that we actually issued a permit. And they were building to our permit issuance. Is that, is my understanding correct on that?
Greg?
We issued a permit for, yes. There's no other, yes, we had issued a permit and then found a flaw in our issuance. But yes, you are correct, trustee.
Okay, so we basically gave the green light to go ahead and then we realized the issue in arrears of that, right?
That is correct.
And, I mean, obviously, you guys know the plans better than I do. Maybe it's a Jeff question. So is there any, I mean, beside ripping out concrete, is there anything else that can be done to mitigate the situation as a compromise or?
One thing that Amanda had noted is that this particular lot, unlike others within that subdivision, has some constraints with a pond to the north and wetland areas and conservancy easements to the east. There are also dedicated areas for septic fields that constrain it. So she thought that the house would entirely need to be reoriented. And even then, it would be a difficult thing to have the side-loaded garage. So when we looked at this, you know, when we first recognized that there was the permit that had been issued in error. But when we looked at the issue with a, you know, a set of fresh eyes, so to speak, this one seemed to be appropriate for the front-loading garage. Now, could there have been more thoughtful conception of the entire PUD in selecting which ones would have the front-loaded garages? Yes, but that wasn't done. And at least in terms of the initial review that was done in connection with this, it was believed that the other lots could all accommodate with greater ease, the side-loaded garage.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Appreciate that.
Any more, Chris?
No, no, I don't have any other questions.
I wasn't here last time, so I reviewed the video of the meeting. And I guess I have, as well as the Architecture Commission, I have a question, Greg, or anybody who was at the Architecture Commission. It looks like there's a lot of notes with that home on the orientation and the side and front-load garage, as well as notes on the adjacent house in the same community about design details that the Architecture Commission looked at and asked for. Again, the whole thing is we're trying for, the problem we're trying to solve is anti-monotony. I can't tell from the notes, did they or did they not agree to the suggestions that came from the Architecture Commission to alleviate the monotony even with the front-load garage?
They did. First of all, the property at 3994, the Denenberg's property was approved. There were some suggestions, discussion about different elements. But overall, the discussion by the commission was favorable and they approved the Denenberg's property. The only issue that was of concern or discussion related to the 3992 Orchard Property had to deal with, again, the front and side garage. And then, but as far as anything else related to the monotony, trustee Kritzmeyer, it was approved by the AC.
Okay, it looked, I mean, the notes are kind of interesting because they look like a lot got discussed and a lot got pushed back. And that's why I wasn't sure whether, in fact, any of the recommendations went through.
Yeah, there was a, there was a very good productive conversation on the different types of materials that were used, why they were used. But there was not necessarily, the chair had favored a certain appearance. The rest of the body felt comfortable with what was presented. And so it was, the best way to describe it was it was a good discussion. And, but everything was approved.
Okay, thank you. And again, I wasn't here. I tried to get a sense of the video, but the rest of you felt, I mean, it looked to me like, on the one hand, we issued a permit in error. It also looked like there's a developer who's looking, saying, I didn't know, and that seems very specious.
What was your last word, trustee Kritzmeyer? It seemed very.
Specious was the word. And I think, and I think that that, I think that that was a concern when this first came to staff's attention. And that's why when we looked at this, we didn't look at it in terms of, oh, did we issue a permit in error? We looked at it in terms of, is this lot really appropriate for getting some relief from the side-loaded garage? And that's why the issues that Amanda had focused on were not whether or not the permit was issued, but rather whether this lot could easily accommodate a side-loaded garage. And as I mentioned before, she identified probably four or five different factors that made it difficult to effectively have this lot with a side-loaded garage. So I think the staff recommendation was to approve this, not because of the status of the permit, but because of the conditions on the lot itself.
The property, yeah.
I see. Thank you.
So.
Go ahead, Rita, yep.
So what does that, how does that account for the accusation of last week that we enforce these rules intermittently anyway? I don't think that's a direct quote, but I think that's pretty close. And how, how is it that a professional developer feels, thinks that it's not important to read the parents in an agreement and not have thought of this ahead of time? You know, I find it, I find that irritating. That if there is an anti-monotony code, you need to know upfront which lots can handle front ends and which ones can't.
And to that point, it's in the ordinance itself. There were two ordinances approving this development. The preliminary PUD, which specifically called out the anti-monotony code, albeit from a prior version of the zoning code, so the sections didn't align with where they are today. But this developer has been the developer from the outset, so that should not have been news to them. And it was stated more generically in the final PUD ordinance. So the should-have-known element certainly comes into play there. And again, the approach that we took at the staff level once this came to attention, to our attention, was let's put all of the extracurriculars, if you will, aside and look at this on the merits of this particular lot. Now, I think it's fair to say that had there been a more thoughtful approach to this, and, you know, I suppose someone could say the village could have been more demanding on the selection of the front-loaded lots as well, but it was not. You know, if there was one, potentially two, depending on how you round, that would have been allowed. This one should have been one of them. Given that two had already been put in and that technically it was 28% instead of 23%. And given the site characteristics of this particular lot, I think that everyone felt that this was an appropriate candidate for the zoning relief that was needed.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the trustees? If not, does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, moved by trustee Tanucci, seconded by. Nobody wants to second it?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Micho, and that's a roll call.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Barowski.
Oh, I really didn't want you to call my name next. I really didn't. I'll vote I, just because concrete is so environmentally unfriendly to make. I don't want to see him pull it back up, and we did issue a permit.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
I don't want to vote I either, but I understand and I appreciate what Phil's attorney and village manager shared about this. We're now in this predicament and to trustee Barowski's point of view, that's a long-winded I under duress.
Exactly.
Trustee O'Connor.
Yay.
All right, thank you, everyone. The motion is carried. And we'll move on to the next item. Which is the village engineer's report.
Hey, Bill, is there a lesson to be learned there that we could document, that we could institutionalize? You know, that before we issue a permit, we make sure we fully understand how the lot allocation is done before.
Well, I think there is. I think we also have the confusion of, I guess, we have a new village planner in the middle of it too, and a new village manager. And I don't know where the breakdown would have been, right? You know, guys, help me, Greg.
Yeah, it was, thank you, Mr. President and trustee Barowski. It is a training moment, a process moment. There was no doubt about it. This issue occurred, reviewed it with staff. It was a transitional, to your point, Mr. President, was a transition thing between, or transition item, I should say, between our former planner leaving and the intergovernmental agreement with Mundeline and the review of the numerous PUDs we have throughout our village. It wasn't caught. We will have, we're making sure now that there is no question as to a PUD or the elements of that PUD before we process anything to trustee Barowski's point. So it's incumbent upon me to make sure that's carried out and we're working that, absolutely.
Does that still become a human process question as opposed to a documentation question? I mean, when the PUD goes through and there is, you know, some kind of breakout on those types of matters, how does that get documented right on the document that says, hey, look, these lots should be front-load. These lots should be side-load, plus or minus, you know, one or two or something like that. Does that get documented somehow?
Yeah, ideally, what we would, and I think this is what you're asking trustee Barowski, ideally, what we would do is have every subdivision that's set up with a PUD, with the various checklist of nuances that would be related to that PUD and have it into our software system that would, you know, flag a certain PUD that these requirements are mandatory here. These have to go before the Architectural Commission. Unfortunately, history has not done that. The capability of the software would require further research to see what the capacity of that software is and what it would allow. But in an ideal world, from a technology standpoint, the ability to input the nuances or the characteristics of the PUD would be the ideal way. It would be almost like a checklist. Somebody comes in and wants to build into a given PUD or even some area that's not developed yet that is going to be a PUD, we would factor that into a future checklist, so.
Hey, Greg, just a quick comment, you know, most of the homes in Long Grove are side-loaded from an aesthetic standpoint, probably should be checking on every front-load, period. Just that's the rule, you know?
We take it.
One other thing, just as a overview comment, is that when we have a subdivision in the past, I think that there's been a lot of discretion given to the individual homeowners as to how they select their design, subject to some oversight. The problem with that is because of the 25%, it becomes kind of happenstance as to which ones happen to look for the front-loaded first. And there might be some value when we're processing any PUDs going forward to have some identification of those which are eligible for the front-loading garage. So that there's not going to be a situation where a property doesn't have the capacity like this one to accommodate a side-load when the allocation's already been used up.
Perfect, thank you. All right, any more comments? Otherwise, we're going to move to village engineer Perry.
Okay, thank you. So you got the engineer's report in your packet. This week, I took the opportunity to reorder the engineer's report to kind of put the active projects towards the top so we can avoid flipping unnecessary pages here. So just kind of just go through this. First of all, the Stumble parking lot is in there. At the last board meeting, I mentioned that I have not received the schedule for the completion of that from the contractor, and that has not changed. So I apologize, the word "not" is erroneously not included in 1B. So to confirm, I have not gotten a schedule from the contractor on that. I continue to work with them and trying to get that, but haven't got it to date. So I apologize for that. The second one, Robert Parker Coffin, the pathway. I do have a schedule from that contractor. They're scheduled to be out there in two weeks to start addressing the punch list on that project. So weather permitting, of course, but had a good meeting with them last week. And everybody's on the same page to get that one completed. 2C, this item had been discussed kind of off and on this year. There was a request to look at adding additional sidewalk at the northwest corner of Robert Parker Coffin Road and Route 83. There is right-of-way constraints over there. We put in a sidewalk that was seven feet wide at that corner. And the, and the current right-of-way is four feet behind that curb on the Robert Parker Coffin side, I'll call it, and then about six inches behind the curb on the other side. So the picture that President Bill just pulled up, you see the pink kind of L there? That is, that, yeah, yep, yep, the portion that parallels the curb, that's the right-of-way. So you've got about four feet that you can expand sidewalk on that side. And then it kind of goes in a wedge to the Route 83 side. And you've got about six inches right where the arrow is that you could expand it. So there's not a lot of real estate over there. And I agree with President Bill that a picture is a thousand words here. And, oh, there you go. I like it.
Well, you know, Ann was showing off at the other meeting, so I'm going to show off.
So you went and got trained, huh?
No, you just, you basically took control. I didn't know you. No, you just, you basically took control. I didn't know you could. So I'm like, okay. So and you did it to me. So I'm doing it now before you do it.
So what you're looking at here is you, with the right away constraints there are, uh, you can add a maximum of 80 square feet of sidewalk and that would involve, you know, relocating and lowering that utility box that says traffic signals, moving the curb from where it is now to the other side. And you would also still have that traffic signal mast pole, uh, right in the middle of, of that sidewalk. So so there's some challenges there. Um, you know, the other thing is looking at the cost of doing so is going to be over $4,000 just to do this little bit of work because there's quite a lot involved and it's a heavily, uh, traveled corner. So traffic control is certainly going to be an issue as we all know from last year when they patched, uh, Route 83. So just wanted to, um, mark that in the field and, um, show this picture just to kind of put some context to the challenges out there and what uh, could be done to increase that sidewalk landing area over there. So I don't know where you want to take it, Bill.
Hey, can I just ask a question? No, I had another thought too. So, um, you know, cause I shot you this picture over the weekend as I was driving around. Um, could, could an alternative be also that you just put some asphalt or concrete up here and you have a step up so that somebody could, if they wanted to walk up here and walk around? Um, versus keeping it all flat? Would that be a, an alternative? Cause it sounds like it's really expensive to lower this and you know, take out the curb and put it back in.
Can I ask a root question be behind that? And what are we, what problem are we solving?
The landing area is small and there's not a lot of room to maneuver. So I was over there. The other side's really big. If you walk to the other side, nice.
I've walked it. Yeah, I've walked it. I, I, I just wanted to clarify. I assume that this landing area meets ADA guidelines, but it just doesn't have capacity for a lot of people. Right?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay.
So, yeah, uh, President Bill, getting back to your question, you know, can you put asphalt in there for, you know, kind of the overflow area, if you will? Um, you know, that, that would meet ADA requirements since you still have the landing pad and that route around there. Um, however, I don't know how IDA will react to that since this is their traffic, uh, pole and equipment, but I can certainly put that feeler out there. My experience is they don't, they won't, uh, think kindly to that.
Oh, they would rather, why? Yes. Yeah. Why? Yeah. They'd rather have the box lowered.
Flat and not introduce, uh, additional hazards, you know, they're, they're going to look at that curb as a hazard.
Got it. So in a car hitting you and, you know, hitting you as you walk is not a hazard. I got it.
So the curb is not a hazard in its current place, but it would be a hazard if it has a hard ledge versus soft ground behind it.
Somebody's going to try to get up there and, you know, stub their foot and hit their head on the traffic signal, uh, plate. So.
Well, why don't you paint it pink? Paint it pink.
I had a fresh can of spray paint when I went out there to do this. So.
Yes, I, I thought the cost on this was considerably more than $4,000.
Yeah, we had, we had $4,300 for this.
No, I thought it was much larger than that. And it's okay. Go ahead.
So, um, I, I think a good thing to do would get, be to get the answer to that question. Uh, President Bill, so let me get that.
Well, I asked the rest of the board, how do they feel? Right? I mean, would they be willing to spend $4,000 to make it all even a nice, you know, bigger landing area there or maybe it was, you know, a thousand or, yeah, go ahead.
I agree. A landing area is very small. And there's traffic coming very, very close to where pedestrians are standing. So anything we could do to make it larger would be good. 4,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money.
Okay.
How many more bodies would this accommodate on?
People, people, people.
People.
We're trying to avoid the bodies.
Whatever, whatever. I mean, on, on average, how many, how many adults?
Looks like about six max.
COVID or non-COVID?
I think, I think from my perspective, it's less about holding more people than it is about keeping the people further away from the traffic.
But are we also encouraging them to cross on that northern side versus the southern side where it just I, 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 I don't know. It, it, it concerns me that you, you could have two lines of people trying to cross that road at once. People from the, that this northern one and people from the southern side, because the sidewalks for, uh, on the other side are on there, you know, they're both, they're both, um, accessible.
Yeah, if the other one doesn't have a crosswalk.
This is where the, yeah, this is a crosswalk. So you want to encourage this one.
Right. But there's two crosswalks. There's the southern one as well for the, where the path, where the path ends.
Sure. There's, there's one across RPC.
Right.
Um, and then this one goes across 83 right here. So.
But, but the path we just put in goes across 83 also.
No.
It does, it does not. No, you have to go, you go after cross RPC to the north to get the walk signal, the traffic signal.
Right.
They can't, they can't, they can't, they can't get a signal on the, 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 the path side.
No, they can't. That's how it was designed.
Okay. I was concerned about, there's no signal there and people at, uh, during the festivals, adults and strollers go across. I've seen them go across that. So that, you know.
Yeah. Well, um, this is the right of way, Jeff. Um, who, who owns the property before that, behind there?
Right. Private property owned by the resident of the corner.
I just wonder if, if we put in something more like brick or something like that, that, you know, if they'd be willing to give us an easement. Or divide out an easement.
You'd have, you'd have to buy the land from them. I mean, who would want that liability, right? Which is a great idea, I think. I mean, if you had enough space or to put a bigger pad in, it'd be great.
I'm concerned about what IDA's response would be.
Yeah.
First and foremost.
Yeah. And well, the other thing was that Jeff, I think you said to relocate this light posts back here so that there's a bigger pad area is going to cost a hundred thousand dollars on top of that, right? So.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, not willing to pay that money.
That was number, that was the number I was concerned about.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's for moving the light. I, I think, I, I think Kent, Kent, I like Kent's comment about it. It's not so much about actual, it's getting them off the street. It, it'd be a little bit also about getting them onto hard ground. I don't care if it's a step up, but versus soft ankle twisting ground.
Well, don't, so do you, does it make sense to have the information before decisions made? Does everyone agree?
Yeah.
Yeah. And even if I, I dot would consider moving that. You know, is it still in the, is still in what they consider to be the site of drivers? I don't know. I don't know what their roles are.
Moving what? Uh, um, allowing us to expand the landing area?
To move the light post.
Oh, the light post they said was gonna, yeah, gonna be a hundred thousand dollars, right?
I couldn't get behind that.
Right. Yeah, that's too much.
Right, Jeff? That's what you said in the email.
Thousand dollars. Yeah, it's a difficult one to move. So that and I don't think that IDA is going to very willingly, uh, agree to move it, uh, on their own behalf either.
But, but I, I mean, let me ask the board here. I mean, I think it's something we, everyone agrees that we should look at expanding the landing area. Uh, maybe we get an alternative if it's, I mean, you know, Chris, you said brick. Well, that'd be interesting to find out versus asphalt.
Me, somebody else, somebody else brought brick in.
I said brick.
Okay.
It's international women's day. Now, Bill, you've got you won't let me draw. You don't want to let me draw.
And you give credit to the dudes. I don't know, Bill.
I, I think it's the whole month.
My apologies, Anne. I will, I will eat those words. So.
Rick would look nice there.
Yeah, it's, it's Chicago. Who's going to maintain it? I guess us, right?
Yep. So, okay. Well, um, maybe so everyone's agreeing, we'll get more information and we'll come back to it, right?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay.
And my apologies again, Anne. So.
All right. Moving right along the checkered road traffic calming, the public information meeting is currently scheduled for two weeks from today, March 22nd. The next item is the road program. I'll skip that for now and take that all with the next item.
But the public meeting, we really don't want to, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to give it back to you, Chris.
Right.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we just don't want that during spring break.
So we may have to push the date?
Stephen's schedule may not be the same as Woodland.
Yeah, but yeah, true. I was just thinking you got a big country club crew. Is it?
They always line them up, Rita. They, they at least District 96 tries very hard to line it up with 125.
They are lined up.
Are they? Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Well, um, village manager Jackson, would it be possible to push it, uh, to the first, uh, board meeting in April?
April 12th, we'll, uh, we, we'll just go back and revisit our logistics and get that changed.
Okay.
Does it have to be at a board meeting?
We just thought it would be more convenient for the board if we did an advanced meeting to the, uh, uh, to the, to the board meeting.
Well, it'd be after spring break too, you know, so.
Yeah. Um, I, I vaguely recall there's a budget discussion in that meeting. Was that going to be a special meeting at 6:00 PM also? The first meeting in April?
No, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. I can't speak to past history. Um, but I think the budget's just a, uh, the, the budget review is just part of a normal, uh, village board business.
Okay.
Right.
So there would be time. Okay. So there would be time at 6:00 PM, the first meeting in April to do this. Okay.
I was just wondering if that neighborhood would want to wait four more weeks for, um, that meeting.
Yeah, by the time we do something, school's over.
Well, yeah, I mean, to your point, it's not going to be done for the fall. You know, semester, right? By the time everything's done.
Probably. Yeah.
I, again, I missed last, I didn't listen to all of that, but would we not be able to place something temporary in there? If, hold the public meeting, get some input, make a decision to try something temporary?
Well, that was one of the options.
Yeah, that was, yeah. I think that seemed like, to me, it seemed like a, a pretty viable experiment.
I'm just asking because that seems like then, you know, try to move it right after spring break to try and hold it. But if that doesn't make sense, then.
It starts getting more and more difficult, right? Uh, spring break is when to when? I'm sorry. Michelle, you had that all documented?
Uh, I believe it's the 20th to the 27th or that week.
Got it. So, yeah, you're starting to, I mean, can you push it and pull it in one week? I don't know. So that's really all you're talking about at that point. Everyone okay with leaving it to the, uh, to the 12th in April? We're trying to get it in, squeeze it in earlier.
Yeah.
April's fine.
I'm fine with that. That seems like the smartest thing.
Jenny?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Anne, are you okay with that?
I am.
Okay. All right. Keep going, Jeff.
Okay. Uh, road program, we'll just take that with the next item on the agenda. The village hall expansion, uh, met with village staff and, uh, trustee Tanucci and trustee O'Reilly on February 23rd to talk about concepts for that. There's going to be some challenges with, with the village hall site and the expansion. So we're currently looking into options for those, uh, to the challenges are going to be the septic system, which was built in 1977. And then also uh, how the expansion impacts parking, which is a premium at the village hall site. So we're looking into that. And as we get that information, uh, it'll be presented.
If, if I could interject for one second, I, I, I think it's, uh, uh, prudent for us to plant the seed with the village board right now, whether it happens two years from now, a year from now, or four years from now. It's inevitable that, uh, this septic field is going to, uh, go away, no longer be useful, however we want to describe it. And Jeff and his analysis and, uh, trustee Tanucci was there. Um, it, it appears that we will not be able to replace the septic field or the septic uh, system because of the type of, uh, soil that surrounds the village hall or that the village hall sits on. So inevitably water and sewer are going to have to be run to that facility. Um, that, and we talked about the closest run possibly being three lakes. Am I speaking out of turn, Jeff, or?
Yeah. So there's, yeah, there's, uh, water in or sanitary sewer in three lakes. Um, not as close as we thought it was at the meeting. Uh, because that particular lot is served by the, uh, a forced main sewer. There's also sewer that the school has, and then also in Old McHenry Road. So we're looking at, you know, potential options to connect to a sewer and then, you know, just order of magnitude cost for each one. Water is a little more difficult. The closest water is in front of 145 Old McHenry Road. So that is going to be a pretty lengthy extension to bring that in. So we're getting our hands around what the order of magnitude cost of that would be as well.
Why do you need water, Tim? Why can't we use well water?
Uh, the, the well is not, you know, under the same, you know, restrictions as the septic because of the, um, soil type. Uh, we, I guess, when we sat down, we thought, uh, perhaps there was an option or an opportunity to uh, partner or work in conjunction, if you will, with the school district because they're connected. So that's part of the, the discussion that was had on that one.
If they connected, we could uh, also connect with them. Okay.
And then to take this a little further, there's discussion that we need to add a second bathroom. I mean, one bathroom in that building just isn't cutting it. But as soon as you add a second bathroom, you need to expand the septic system, but you can't expand the septic system because the soil type won't allow you to replace it or expand it, which effectively means you can't put in a second bathroom unless you connect the sewer line. So all this is interconnected with each other. Did I say that correctly, Jeff?
Yep.
Like a lot of construction projects, you start with one thing and then it just grows exponentially.
Is a, is a septic berm possible?
No, the, the county has you know, uh, restricted any type of septic field in that particular soil.
Oh, wow. Okay. Not good.
Was it, was it Chris who had the idea of building above the water? The, uh, I'm sorry, the, the water pumping station?
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I think trustee Barowski had, had, uh, had a discussion about, uh, um, potentially either adding on or building above, uh, the water facility. That's correct.
And you've got five acres going straight east from there too.
That's a big bathroom.
So I should, I should take this opportunity to say that anybody who hasn't taken a real good look at village hall should do so. Of course, we always want to respect the historic nature of the building. Um, but frankly, it's inadequate for our needs. It just really is. People are on top of each other. There's no privacy. One person gets on a phone call. Everybody else can hear them. There's one bathroom. I'm surprised Greg hasn't had to run out to a tree by now. I mean, there's one bathroom. Uh, I know we deeply respect historic buildings. I'm not suggesting we should run away from the village hall necessarily, but it's inadequate. So we want to respect the historic nature, but at the same time, provide a clean, safe, and I'm referring to the stairway now, a place for people to work. And what we have today is not cutting it. So anybody who hasn't taken a close look at the village hall needs to go and do so.
So this is one of the items that we have on our strategic workshop, right? Greg?
Yes, it absolutely is.
So, I mean, because we could, this could go into a long conversation. So great point, Kent, but can we save this one for our workshop? So, I mean, because we could, this could go into a long conversation. So great point, Kent, but can we save this one for our workshop?
Sure. Are we still doing that next month, this month?
Yes, I sent out.
I'm hoping, I, I'm hoping that we have a, I, 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 and I'm not, I'm not going behind Greg because I asked him this afternoon. I'd really like to see an agenda before this weekend. So we have, you know, the weekend and a week to be able to at least think about any of the topics.
It'll be out.
And I'm sorry, Greg, you were starting to say you sent something out?
Yeah, I sent and got confirmation on the meeting date.
On the meeting date? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was still the case.
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Has there been any, has there been any progress or any, or the owner of the, of the car wash property on Osage? Have they come back to us at all? Is that still a viable option for a donation?
They, yeah, I, I had conversation with them, oddly enough, because a Realtor wanted to know what kind of sign they could put up there to lease the property. So they're taking a step back to start to look at potentially leasing it. My understanding or, or selling it, I'm sorry. My understanding is that up to date, and it's been about a month, a month and a half, maybe, that they still haven't had any bites on the property. So. But I still have the contact information from the individual who is looking at the donation. So it's not off the table. I think they're taking one last shot for a better, lack of a better description.
Thank you.
I think one of the owners is the Realtor.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But just one other comment I'd make on the village hall site and the, the septic. Now, all of, all of the soil information at this point is, you know, what's best available to us, which is aerial maps and G I S. Maps that are provided by the county. I would, I'm certainly going to recommend the first item be confirm that those are accurate and before, you know, going through and having big time discussions on sewer. So I'll, I'll get that. That's one of the first things on my list. So just wanted to put that out there.
How long does that take, Jeff?
To get that proposal? Probably not very long, and I'm, I'm guessing that that's going to come and it's going to be under the village manager's spending authority. So as soon as I get it, I'll send it to him and he'll make the, the appropriate call on that.
Thank you.
All right, keep moving.
Hey, next, the Robert Parker Coffin Road Covered Bridge, excuse me, the award winning Robert Parker Coffin Covered Bridge. We've got the, the chapter award and the Lake Branch Award. I updated these to include the information on where one could register to attend either one of those ceremonies. I've already got myself registered and I'll be there on the eighteenth. There is one complimentary ticket available for both ceremonies, one per each ceremony. So I was talking to Greg earlier today. If you can let me know who's going to use that ticket, I can help navigate the registration process. So that way that user doesn't get charged for using that complimentary ticket. So as soon as that person is known, let me know and I will be happy to help.
So that's during the, it's a lunch thing, right? Correct?
Yes.
During the business day. So is there anyone here, any trustee that would like to go or is available to go?
Yeah, I spoke for it this afternoon.
All right, well.
If that's okay with everybody.
I have no problem with that. Is everyone else, also okay with that?
No objection. Might want to consider if Rita can't make it, somebody from the historical society.
Okay.
Throwing it out there.
That's a good, a good idea, Chris. Yeah. But Rita, you can make it, right?
Yep, it's St. Charles in, for lunch.
Got it. There's no such thing as a free lunch, right?
No, that's not.
That was a very expensive lunch.
That's all right. Big deal. It's a big deal for, for Jeff.
But you know, that's the other thing is that, you know, Chris, you bring up a good point. We may want to make sure the historical society is aware of it, that if they want to attend. I mean, worst case, we pay for it. You know, I don't know.
The chapter award luncheon ceremony is typically well represented by the award winners. So you know, if there's, there's a handful that want to go, certainly you're not going to be out of place. So just add that.
So Greg, will you take that action item?
And notify the historical society?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
And the downtown should probably know too, like Ryan, so if he doesn't know already.
What about architectural commission?
Were they involved in this project? I don't know that they were.
Jean's big into.
Oh, well, I mean, you sure, you can make her aware of it. Absolutely. To your point, yep, historical.
Right. Bridges and.
Bridges, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Or we could just bring a busload of golfers too, if you really want to.
Oh, geez. And then, and then another beer will come out. Won't be the bus wedgie. I don't know what it'll be, but keep going.
Nice thing on, on the bridge, I was talking with the township after the engineer's report came up, so it's not in here, but they're going to be able to address the west transition plate on the bridge on March twenty first, Monday morning, weather permitting, starting at nine o'clock. So if that is okay with the board, we can make those arrangements and I would ask Greg to help notify everybody through the various channels that the village has.
Were you asking us to spend money?
So no, that, that repair is only like five hundred dollars. So the date was uncertain as of the last board meeting. The township said March twenty first, they're going to shoot for. So I guess I'm just looking to see if there's any objection to that date.
Not to the best of my knowledge. I mean.
They have to, they have to close it off temporarily, right?
Right, but you've got to close that for, for a couple hours. So it closed from probably nine to noon.
Denise and Natalie will make sure that it gets out through our communication channels.
Yeah, the downtown should be notified too, I guess, right? So, yeah. I'm assuming there's nothing going on then, but.
Okay. So that's the end of the engineer's report. If there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Okay, if not, keep moving. Next item on the agenda.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty two road maintenance program. So at the last board meeting, I mentioned that Eila Township and Kildare wanted to join and make this a large program with the village of Long Grove. Good news is Kildare and Eila Township delivered. We've got all of the information from them so that we can get the package put together and submitted over to the state for their review and approval. The unfortunate news, and you've got a memo in your board packet that as part of kind of the due diligence and the design of this, we take pavement cores. And there was one pavement core on Robert Parker Coffin Road that was, was bad. There's no other way to put it. It had a little over five and a half inches of asphalt, but only two inches of aggregate subbase, which is the stone that goes under your asphalt. And when I see a pavement core like that, that immediately says that road, that section of road needs to be reconstructed. Now, reconstructing Robert Parker Coffin Road, kind of similar to the discussion we just had about the traffic signal, since it's close to eighty three, becomes a, a bigger project. This would involve closing a lane of the road, much like we did with Robert Parker Coffin Road down in, through the downtown. But since we're right next to a I dot controlled traffic signal, they're going to be involved with the detour and there's a strong potential, they're going to require some temporary traffic signals for that. So it, it balloons and it's not, no longer just a straight, you know, go to I dot, tell them we're milling and resurfacing a road and get their approval. I mean, we're, we're months out from getting a permit and approval for Robert Parker Coffin Road. So I'm gonna.
Are you talking about reconstructing the entire section from eighty three?
Uh, just from Wildwood to eighty three.
Okay.
So, so with that, I looked at options and what road could be substituted for Robert Parker Coffin Road in the road program? So we looked at a couple things. What is the rating of the road and what's the cost as well? Because Robert Parker Coffin Road in January, when we were looking at it, the cost of reconstructing it was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we wanted to kind of keep in that neighborhood as well. So we looked at a few different roads and Robert Parker Coffin Road had a pavement condition rating of eight, which is not good. And looking through the rest of the pavement condition study and also knowledge of, you know, driving the roads. Port Clinton Road will be the next worst rated road that's left in, in Long Grove after this, this program. Port Clinton Road has a rating of twelve. Ironically, that's the same rating as Chickamuga Lane, which is included as an alternate. So, and Port Clinton Road resurfacing that from eighty three to Forest Glen is a hundred and twenty seven thousand nine hundred, so very close in dollars. So we're trading a, a road condition of eight for one that's twelve at the same dollar. So that's what we would recommend doing. There's been discussion about Creekside and that is scheduled for repaving in twenty two, twenty three. And the roads in Creekside have ratings of thirty three, thirty four and twenty five, which are all higher than Port Clinton Road. And in addition, you know, the economy of scale of doing all of Creekside in one road program is something that was considered by our office and, and something that I would recommend the village stay with. You know, keeping all of those Creekside, Tribal and Arrowhead together as a single road program next year. So that's our recommendation to move forward. You've got a resolution in the board packet that essentially removes Robert Parker Coffin Road and adds Port Clinton Road. This is the resolution that gets presented to the state, just so they know where that M F T. Money is being spent. So looking for approval to substitute that road for the, the reasons I outlined there. And so we can get that signed and get this all set, sent over to I dot for approval. And with the projected bid opening date of March thirty first. One, one thing I, I would like to comment on before I forget, there's a lot of uncertainty in the market right now, as everybody well knows, and oil prices are fluctuating every day. Most days they're higher, some days they're a little bit lower, but most days they're higher. So, you know, what's, what's that going to do to the, the cost for this project? And to that, I would offer that earlier today, our office opened bids for another road program, Village of Mundaline, and the asphalt prices came in, came in pretty good. They were about eight percent higher than they were last year, which is on the order of what we expected that. So in January, when we first conceptualized and talked about this road program, we increased the cost from last year about ten percent to accommodate for that. So, so we're, we're right there using that now. Is oil going to impact the asphalt prices tomorrow? I couldn't tell you that, but using the prices that we have today and that we opened bids on from this morning. I'll put it this way. In January, we had a projected construction cost of one point zero six two million for Oak Grove Drive, Oak Grove Circle, Chickamuga and Robert Parker Coffin. Today, using all those oil prices and everything that is going to be needed to complete the project, we're at one point six, one point oh six eight million. So about four thousand more than what we had conceptualized in late January. So just want to throw that out there and then.
Jeff, just really quick before you leave that topic. So I mean, what's the percentage of oil in, in the asphalt? It's not that large, right?
No, it's, it's not large at all. I would say it's, it's less than five.
That's what I thought. Yeah, it's a small percentage. So that's why it's not impacting it as much.
I'm kind of surprised that the labor is not building in the cost of higher fuel for their machinery.
Right.
Yeah, good point. Anne, so I don't know if you have any comments on that, Jeff?
Yeah, no, the, the cost of oil is, is certainly the asphalt, but then, you know, it kind of trickles into everything else because, you know, the workers have to bring the machines and operate them. You're, you're absolutely right, Anne.
Well, if it's holding that close, that's great for us, but I think your point is like time is of the essence.
Absolutely.
What else did you have, Jeff?
So, so that was it. I was just wrapping it up and I was gonna turn it back to the board for discussion and approval of the resolution.
And I would just, you know, ask trustee O'Connor, since this is your area of expertise, are you good with this?
Yes, I am.
All right. And I don't know if the rest of the board has comments or questions, yeah.
Just one quick question. So I get that. So what will happen with Robert Parker Coffin? You're just gonna continue branching off, at least gathering information in that?
So that's a, that's a good question. It could be included and permitted and included in next year's road program. Or, you know, I think it would be even a stretch at this point to get all the permits and do it separately this year. So I would recommend just kind of think through it, get all of the idiom that comes to mind is ducks in a row, but I don't know if that's quite what I want to say, but get all of that information together so that it can be programmed for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Is it possible to, let's, let's say that the cost on that is two fifty, three hundred thousand. Do we have that available to do it? Is it possible to do it this year and do we have it available?
Kind of depends on some Springfield choices.
Ah, okay.
Oh, no, I mean, it's, it's possible, right? So I guess, to your point, Rita, we should be looking at it, getting the information. And if we feel that it's something we want to do, we can always add it, right?
Yeah, it might be one of those, you know, end of the season projects, but it might be beneficial financially to sooner rather, lock it in sooner rather than later. Who knows?
Yep. Any other comments from the board or does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move, move by trustee O'Connor, second by trustee Kritzmeyer? Chris, you look like you're gonna make a comment. You had that look. No, okay, all right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee Barowski.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, so now we're moving on to item ten. And Jeff, are you, do we need Jeff to stick around by any chance?
I had one question, and I don't know if that relates to Jeff. It actually, I think it's item ten, connects item ten to, so I'm looking at all my lovely paper here. Village script, Village Manager Jack, Jack, Greg, you had in your notes the thing about decommissioning wells and there's forty three percent that have not yet been decommissioned.
What I, what I sent out were a list of wells that need to be decommissioned. In doing some research into, into wells that over the years should have been decommissioned, and this was off conversations Jeff and I had about access to wells and touchpads and things like that. I asked the Lake County Environmental Health Director to look at our properties in the downtown area and the PIN numbers to determine if he had anything that would support that the wells had been decommissioned. The ones that he provided me that weren't, were not decommissioned are on that list. I think I shared with the board. If I didn't, it was, it was certainly. I think I shared with the board. If I didn't, it was, it was certainly a number, but we've got roughly 40% of wells that they do not, they being Lake County, do not have documentation that they have been decommissioned. The next step in this is for us to turn and make contact with those individual businesses just to see if they have paperwork that shows that they were decommissioned. So we can bring our records up to, up to being current.
Okay, thank you. So that doesn't really require Jeff to stick around with engineering expertise.
Yep.
And technically on that point, it's really not going to be our responsibility. We're kind of facilitating the paperwork. It's actually the county that, that has the ultimate responsibility for that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Well, if you want Jeff to stay for the next two items, he can. So it's just really your guys' call.
I was just, I wasn't sure if that dot connection went through Jeff's expertise or not. If that makes sense as a metaphor.
It makes total sense.
Is there a deadline for the county to do this?
No, actually, actually they were expecting the wells to be decommissioned and it's something we found. And when, they were supposed to be decommissioned some time ago. And it's just something I stumbled across when I was doing other things and said, why, you know, we should get this, get this taken care of and close the books on it.
So they were.
I don't, I'm sorry.
They, they were waiting for us and we were waiting for them.
Don't know any other way to describe it. Vic, I don't know if you could shed any light on that or.
We're not technically involved in the decommissioning of the wells. That's something that should have been happening as people connected. And they, they have paperwork that they, they, they have both work they physically have to do. And then paperwork they're supposed to submit to the county. Apparently there's been a gap in that process. The county should have been taking care of it, but has not.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Jeff, I think you're free to leave.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you, Jeff. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so we, items 10 and 11 are similar. They're virtually the same thing. One is consideration of approval resolution for a waiver connection to the Long Grove water supply for certain wells for Fountain Square. And then the other one is a consideration of approval resolution. Midwest Capital's request for a waiver of connection to the longer water supply for the well on the Mill Pond properties. So this is one where we drafted a resolution that allows us to grant these waivers a few meetings ago. And now we have the petitioner, if you will, that has applied for those waivers. So I don't know if Greg or Vic want to add anything to that right now to set this up? Or did I set it up appropriately?
I, I think that's where we are. The, the two resolutions track the conditions that are in the ordinance that you passed a few weeks back. We do have some provisions to have the wells impacted be more specifically identified in order to activate, if you will, the waivers. And as the ordinance says, the waivers can be withdrawn subject to certain notices pretty much at any time at the village board's discretion.
Thank you, Vic. Kent, it looked like you had a comment right away.
Oh, um, yeah. So I actually supported this a few weeks ago. I supported the general concept of allowing business owners to water flowers and fill fountains from their wells. I think when I did that, I might not have been looking at the whole picture. And I also didn't understand that these wells were supposed to be decommissioned. So in effect, we're being asked to allow property owners to use wells that they shouldn't even have in operation in the first place. So that's one thing. I'll say that I like the way the ordinance is written. Vic, you mentioned some things were put in there, you know, annual plumber certifications and make sure it's not connected to the, to the village waters. So there's no cross contamination. So I have no issue with the way the resolution is written. I'm having concerns now about just allowing this period. Wish I could take my vote back from a few weeks ago, but can't do that. But we can look at the individual ones. Part of it is what I just said, we're allowing people to use walls that they shouldn't even have in the first place. Part of it is as soon as we allow a couple businesses to do this, the others are going to want to do it too, and it'll just go right down the street. At least the 43% of the wells that are still there. You could say that this is not really equitable to the 57% who followed the rules and capped their wells. You know, that we think, well, gee, what did I do that for? I should have just dragged my feet and I could have potentially used my well for watering. I don't know. It's, it's messier than I thought at first. My first thoughts were it's not that much water, water some flowers.
Vic's raising his hand.
Sorry if I'm rambling. Go on.
Yeah, I, I think that there may be a little bit of confusion between the well decommissioning discussion we just had and this, these are actually two different things. The well decommissioning has to do with when a property has connected to the water and has disconnected the well, and they have to go through a certain process. And then they have to file certain paperwork. It may very well be that all of them have gone through the physical disconnection and, and decommissioning, but haven't done the paperwork. That's, that's the part we don't know. The, the inquiry that Greg made to the county is what revealed that the, at least the paperwork is lacking. And I understand the staff is trying to find out whether it's just paperwork or whether the decommissioning, the physical decommissioning is also in need of happening. The ordinance that you passed, whatever, a few weeks back, is really paralleling a provision that's in the county code regarding wells. So it's not anything unusual. It simply allows a process to have some exception for irrigation wells essentially. And, you know, this is certainly Fountain Square is a property that has had the well in place and has never been decommissioned. It has never had another, it has never connected to our water system to have a substitute water source. I understand the same exists for Mill Pond. And the, the question is, should they connect to the water? Now, there's certainly an economic issue for the village with this. And I know that we talked about this a year ago or whatever it was. And so that's part of the consideration. There, there's, there was, I believe, a little bit of attention between, do we want to have that uniformity of everybody connecting to the well? And otherwise, getting the revenue from it to the extent that it's utilized. And the, the flip side risk of maybe just having the owner decide, I'm not going to invest in the, in the fountain and in the landscaping. And so that's, I think, where the, the nub of this issue came before you last year and is back before you again. You know, when you passed the ordinance a few weeks back, one of the key considerations was that there were essentially some, some more public aspects to the property seeking the waiver. I don't know that that applies as universally as, as the need to connect to water. And I think, you know, at least, and it's been a while since I've walked downtown Long Grove because of the pandemic. But my, my recollection is that there are really only a handful of places that have that type of open space. So I, I offer that not to suggest where you should go with your vote, but I wanted to clarify those distinctions.
Okay, thank you. So just so I understand, if a well has been decommissioned, then it cannot be used, right? Because it's, it's capped and that's the end of it. Is that right?
Correct. And, and, you know, because of the proximity of our water mains, you can't drill a new well. This is actually an existing well in both of these instances, an existing well that unless we grant the waiver, will need to be capped and either connected to our water system, or there simply won't be an irrigation source readily available for those areas.
So these two wells at the fountain and at the, at old, old mill, did they previously serve those buildings that are near there or were they only for outdoor use?
That's a good question. And if you look at the resolutions, both of them do require some, you know, if this is approved, post-approval documentation. So that the wells are exclusively for irrigation. Certainly there was water, there was a well water source available. And I don't know if it's one well, two wells, whatever, to provide water to the fountain and for irrigation of the gardens in those two properties. I don't know whether those wells were exclusively for those purposes or whether they had a secondary purpose of serving the buildings. And whether they had been maintained just for irrigation after those buildings connected or whether they were always standalone. That, that's a question that we will need information under the terms of the resolution to activate the waiver.
Okay.
So is this resolution premature to having all the facts?
You know, I, I think we can certainly say give us the facts first. But the, the waiver is drafted, or the resolution is drafted would only activate the waiver after they've given us that information. And it's been reviewed as being satisfactory by our engineer. So I, I suppose it ticks the one half dozen of the others from that perspective.
How long would it take to find out how many wells downtown have actually been decommissioned? Sounds like there's some question as to whether the paperwork is correct or not.
Well, so, so Kent, you know, guys, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've, Jeff's not here now. Most of the buildings are connected to the public water system, right? So you're, but you're trying to understand, is there another situation looming like this that, that could happen? I, that's where we're going.
It's, it's kind of like, is everybody keeping a side gig well on the.
Right. Right. So I've got a couple of major concerns, but one of them is, is this just going to start the dominoes falling? Once we give a couple of approvals, everybody up and down the street who still has an active well are going to want to jump in on this too. So it'd be kind of nice to know, are we talking about truly 43%? Or are we talking about 10%, 5%? You know, that issue might go away.
I, I don't think we have the answer to that right now, Kent. I think that the, at least for these two properties, we have known for roughly a year or longer that those wells had been maintained. All of the others presumably had done what they were supposed to do of, of sealing the wells when they made their connections. And I, I believe that, you know, because these properties are all sort of clustered and they kind of overlap different parcel lines. It's a little hard to know exactly where the, the wells are and what they were serving. But I believe that the buildings themselves have all been connected. Is Denise or Greg, can you confirm that? The, at Mill Pond and, and in and around Fountain Square at the corner?
If you're talking about those buildings, I, to the best of my knowledge, yes.
So for, for them to have made that connection, I believe that, that the protocol was we were making sure that there weren't any cross connections, which means the old well would have been cut off. Whether it had been properly sealed and if, as a physical matter and whether the paperwork was properly filed as a administrative matter, those are the things that we don't, you know, that's the, what 43%. And, and I think that, you know, that may just be a matter of chasing folks for paperwork. And so they seem to be a different situation from these two properties. Now, will we get other requests? We might. I think, you know, certainly the fact that the village has been aware of these two sites for, for some time, at least distinguishes them because that, you know, they're, they were identified as irrigation well sources. And, and so maybe that makes a difference to you, maybe it doesn't. The others would have been a little more surreptitious, I, I would guess.
But the other thing too is last year we granted the waiver for both properties, right? So, and they, they planted the, the flowers as a result of that and did all the, the work. You're not, you're shaking your head. We didn't.
I, I think we only did it for Fountain Square.
Yeah, we did for both. We did.
Only one.
Yeah, we did for both.
We did?
Yeah, it ended up being for both.
Fountain Square. I don't remember too.
I don't remember Mill Pond either.
Mill Pond was tied to that.
They, they made a request for Mill Pond and I, I think that the village only addressed the Fountain Square issue. My, my understanding of what happened to Mill Pond is, is unclear.
Was that Joni or was that the new owner? I don't think, I don't think the ownership had changed hands then.
Well, the building is, it's the Forsyth's own the property, right? Whatever, you know, organization.
I'm talking about Mill Pond.
No, they own that. It's a lease, right? They, I don't believe she owned, the restaurant was owned by Joni's, but.
What you're saying. I see.
The properties underneath is, you know, there's, there's a landlord, right?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't remember Mill Pond being mentioned.
I recall it bringing up and I, I recall that we said no. I, maybe I, I mean, I'm sure it's knowable, but. I, I had a question.
I, I've, I've just pulled up the letter. Last year, we did grant a essentially a one-year deferral of connection. And it was limited to the Fountain Square property. Now, I, I, you know, I know that they did at one point ask that it also include Mill Pond, but that was not part of what the, the village board authorized.
When does that expire?
It expired already.
Yeah, it expired at the, at the beginning of this month.
Oh, calendar. Okay. Oh, this one. Okay.
Can someone help me understand what landscaping? I mean, and there's a little bit of it, the, the Kent one, I think the, the, the resolution is, is well worded, except it says in keeping the landscaping and, you know, roughly the same way it was last year. What would your, what gets irrigated at Mill Pond?
Pond itself, the grass that they have in front of Broken Earth. Yeah.
Yeah, in front of Broken Earth, there's a bed with a sculpture that they plant with pansies and tulips.
You cut out there for a second, Jenny. So.
Pansies and tulips, I heard.
Got it.
Yeah. Yeah, there's like a little triangle. There's quite a big triangular bed right in front of Broken Earth in that little courtyard by the parking.
And so we're talking about irrigating all the way from the backside of Joni's all the way up to Robert Parker Coffin?
Yep.
Isn't, isn't the water real circulating system? It's not constantly pulling water out of the.
I'm sure it's not constantly pulling, but the, my understanding is it's also helping to fill up the pond back there, right? So.
Is the wheel even there? I swear.
Yeah, they redid it. They redid it. They redid it. Brand new.
No, it's definitely there. It was my second week here in the village when I saw them putting it up and had questions about it. So no, it's definitely there and it's definitely operational.
Yeah, it's, it's new and improved, right? They redid the drainage around there and everything else, so.
I mean, if we were looking ahead and said, what other properties might have public merit for allowing not, you know, staying disconnected? Because last year I was one of the ones who said, look, there is nothing that says anybody has to water flowers. And I find Fountain Square to be an, you know, an unusual and difficult situation because it's privately owned and it feels like it's publicly owned. And I wish it was publicly owned and then it wouldn't, we wouldn't be in this situation. But are there any, besides these two situations, are there any others that we would consider even saying yes to because they have public merit? Or perceived public merit?
I ask the rest of the board. I don't, I don't know. I don't think so.
That seems to be a, it's a perception thing. So how do, how do you measure perception? And I.
I think we're the arbiters.
I think maybe the other side of the coin is tenant happiness and pride in your business, pride in ownership. Why is that our responsibility? You know, those, those properties were purchased from professionals who understand what's required. I think it would be bad business on the owner, ownership part to not provide the tenant, whoever it is, with what was there when the tenant signed the lease. I know Enzo and Lucias has birthdays, anniversaries, part. Um, I know Enzo and Lucia's has birthdays, anniversaries, parties, small weddings. And I would bet that the majority of them depend upon Fountain Square and the gazebo for pictures. Um, I would think the same thing, you know, it's, it's, the Old Mill Pond has been there for how many decades? Who, who would, who would not take care of that if you buy the property? You know, I, I, I just think that would be bad business on an owner's part, and I don't think that these people engage in bad business. It'd be bad business on our part in a sense to say, oh, sure, we'll do it for, we'll do it for these two properties. But nobody else, because your property isn't perceived as, as, as being owned by the village. I, if I, if I was requesting the same exemption, I, I, I don't know that I could accept that kind of a response. And let's look down the line a little further. If we've debated many times, should we even be in the water business? And if, if a corporation comes along, wants to buy it from us, or we wanna sell it to them, X percent of properties are, aren't hooked up. We don't, we don't know where their wells are at this point in time. You, you know, there's a lot of unknowns here that I don't think we have enough information really to make an intelligent decision about this. But how much, how much is it worth if we don't even have minimum monthly bills to everybody and capping off the wells that were supposed to have already been done? You know, it's kinda like, well, you guys don't know how to do it, so it's not worth that much money. So on, on several levels, I, I have very serious, um, questions about this. You know, what if, what if these two parties buy more property, Towner Square being one of them? Does, does that, does that get an exemption too?
We, we hold the cards, or by the way, Towner Square's, to the best of my knowledge, has never been wa, watered, and we hold the cards to that, Rita. Um, this is one where, um, you know, Fountain Square consumes a lot of water. And, um, they asked, they, they didn't, the first year of COVID, they didn't water it. Um, we gave him the, uh, exemption, they went and planted the flowers, they watered it. Um, you know, looked, they looked beautiful, right? So, um, you know, that's what, that's what their ask was to, to do that. And we, you know, we agreed for the waiver where we put this, uh, resolution in place of whatever it was a month or two ago. That gives us the ability to, to grant these exceptions. We're following the process, the exception's been put in front of us, and, um, that's what we're looking to approve.
Well, I, and I understand that, and I'm, I'm just explaining why. I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable on, on several levels. I think we need more information. I need, I, I'll speak for myself. I need more information.
Let's see, we haven't heard from, thank you, um, Rita. We haven't heard from Chris yet, so.
You know, pick on me again. How about, how about Jennifer?
All right, we can go to Jennifer. You wanna go there?
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Jenny, you wanna go first?
I'm, I'm just gonna contrast this with the bridge opening with, that was, I believe, the Long Grove Confectionery paid for all of the lighting on that bridge. And they donated it to the village for the community. And I think that's super generous. Yet we have people that own the bulk of the property that are not taking pride in their own properties. And I have, I really have a hard time justifying allowing them to use the wells when everybody else has had to cap them. I'm, I I really have a difficult time with this. And I think I've consistently said that, so. Um, I think I don't like being pushed into this decision where I have to choose being accused of the village not taking care of the downtown, but we're being coerced, and I don't like it. So I, I agree with Rita, um, or Trustee O'Connor, I'm, I have a lot of reservations.
Thanks, Jenny. Chris?
All right, comes back to me. I think Rita, um, Rita was very well spoken. I don't know if I would have used the word serious concerns. I have strong feelings or strong concerns, you know, it's a little different, different meaning maybe, but um, yeah, I, I guess our water system's kind of a mess, and that's really what bothers me. We've, um, you know, we put the water in to help the downtown per their request for all those years. And we're compelling people to connect, and then we're not compelling people to get that, connect all the time. We've got a losing um, water system on our hands with, I don't know if I have clear path, line of sight visibility as to how we fix that. Um, to me, I think, you know, we need to really get serious about enforcing our water, um, our water connection, or do something totally different. It, it makes no sense to me what we're doing here.
Yeah, I'm lost though, because I thought we were enforcing the connections, and in fact, I thought we were keeping really good track of that. So the what brought in the doubt now is, is, uh, Greg, you looked and see, you know, what wells were decommissioned, right? Are you saying that, um, you know, I wish Jeff was here. What, how many wells are, I mean, how many buildings are not connected, right? Are we down to one or two?
What, what prompted this were two things, the, uh, the looking into the decommissioning were two things. We got a call from Lake County Environmental Health who asked for a letter from the village, uh, from my office to, um, verify that we had given a waiver for the well to not be capped over at, um, Fountain Square. Gave that letter, and then, uh, I asked the question of staff, how many wells do we know of that are not capped? And nobody could give me an accurate answer. We also have reason to believe there is one building downtown that never connected to the water. Uh, they do not have a touchpad in their facility, and, um, we're investigating that as we speak. Um, those are the two things that prompted us to look at, uh, for me to ask staff uh, and, and then ultimately go to the Lake County, um, uh, Health Department to see what records they had of what was capped.
Yeah, but, but the, the, the point I wanted to be clear on here is that there's it's suggesting that most of the buildings aren't connecting, or a whole bunch of buildings aren't connected. That's not true.
No, that is not, that is not.
That's what I wanna be perfectly clear on, cause that's the, that's the one thing that we don't wanna start down that path. We have required everyone to connect. Now, I don't know which, you know, building that is that didn't connect, so you're, you're investigating that, right?
Yes.
But we were, we did a pretty good job of that. It's the capping of the wells that we don't have a good
That's correct.
Record of if they're, if they're all capped.
And Vic, and when Vic and I talked about this, my concern was, could a, um, user of village water through our water system also connect to a well? And Vic said that would be, under his understanding, that it would be a little bit difficult, and that, uh, our only concern with that would be what, uh, Ken brought up earlier about, um, uh, cross contamination, um, as he described it. But, um, let me say that there is no indication that anybody is or is not connected to a well and has a dual connection. We're not, we don't have anything that shows that.
Yeah, and you had something.
I guess.
Yeah.
Here, here's the possibility I see, and that all buildings but one are connected to, to village water. But that does not say we don't have, people don't have two wells. And if they connected to city water, they had to also do the plumbing to make sure there is no cross connection, so that they're not flowing back and, you know, pressure is the right way. But I guess that's the question, and we don't have that. And it, to the point, I, I said, I find it very confounding, and I, I do agree with statements others made. I, I feel like we're getting our arms twisted. I also feel it's very true, there is nothing that requires anybody to water their flowers, other than Rita's good point of their pride and Jenny's point of, of pride. But there's nothing, we can compel them to connect potable water. We can't compel them to water the flowers.
Yep, point well taken there. Am I sensing tonight that there's no support for this?
I think you got that.
All right, well, um, I guess the question is, uh, there was some additional information requested. Can we get that information? Uh, and then bring it back before the board and continue the discussion?
There's no live motion, so.
Yep, I think that's what we'll have to do. All right, so that, that, well, um, Greg, I think we've got, um, our marching orders, right?
I, I would ask, I would ask the board to, uh, when they have an opportunity, um, if they have specifics they want me to look into, so we, we only, we, we gather the information at one shot. Um, I, I would ask that the board members send me an email with any questions they have or anything they'd like me to look at, so, you know, we, we can at least get that information.
I can do that. Put a date for your gathering?
As soon as possible. Uh, the, 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 what's gonna take us a little bit of time as staff is because of lack of resources, is being able to get to the building owners to verify what's capped and what's not capped for Lake County. But again, uh, to President Jacob's point, uh, we only have one building that we're in question of as far as not being capped, or I'm sorry, not being connected to city or village water. And, and we're not even sure that that's accurate. We, we're still doing a further investigation, so.
Yeah, may I suggest that at least three areas of inquiry may be helpful to you. One is this whole issue of the decommissioning, which because if, it may be paperwork may take a lot more time and may ultimately not be particularly germane to this issue. Two is getting the information specifically as to these two sites. Um, what wells are they talking about? Where are they located? What are they serving? That kind of information, the stuff that's in the resolution itself. Having that upfront may, may help clarify the issue. Um, and then I think as, as far as a, a third issue goes, is just confirming that um, you know, there are no other properties that the exterior hose bibs are not registering on our water system when they're used. Um, that may be a, a, a pretty simple way of checking. Uh, and, and I think as part of that, we can confirm with Jeff that when people made their connections, we were also making sure that there were not any improper cross connections. I'm pretty sure that that was part of the overall scheme of going through the connection process. So if there's not an improper cross connection, then either it's gonna be an irrigation well, or they're drawing it from our system for any exterior hose bib. Is it cover the, the, the information landscape that you're looking for?
Is there any way to get a projection on how much water and lost revenue we're talking about? Versus somebody who would normally maintain their property and water the, water the flowers, fill the wheel and fill the, fill the, uh, fill the fountain? Do you have any idea how much water we're actually talking about?
Yeah, I asked, I asked Jeff that question as well. He couldn't, he couldn't provide me with any numbers, uh, Trustee Broowski.
Yeah, it's hard to say. So yeah, I think Vic summarized it well from my perspective.
All right, to be continued.
Can a mundeline inspector help us with any of this, going out and looking at things to see what's there or not there?
Um, I have to see what resources they have available to do that. Um, I'd have, I'd have to check. I think, if, if we're provided with the paperwork that says the well is capped from the responsible party who did the capping. I mean, I think that, that provides, the, the, the issue is over whatever period of time, and I can't speak to, to that period of time. But whatever period of time it was, that, that paperwork was just not either collected or sought after, and you know, this, this, what, these, these issues that led up to this, to this, uh, research on the, uh, capping of the wells. So we're just, we're going back to try to find paper.
Yeah, so if the paperwork says it's been capped, it's been capped. The question mark are these thirteen that may or may not have been, we don't know.
Correct.
I would suspicion that the, uh, shutdown pandemic shoved a lot of things to the side. To scramble to keep, keep things open.
Yep, I'm sure it did. So, um, all right, we'll, um, we'll continue this one. Uh, we'll get that information and we'll figure out where to go next. Everyone okay with that?
Yes, thank you.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you. All right, so if I'm following this correctly, we're on to the village president and trustee reports. Um, I'm on the list first. Uh, there is a task force meeting uh, for the Route fifty-three task force next Monday at four PM. I will be attending. That's the only report I have. Uh, moving right along, um, Trustee Broowski, do you have any report, a report?
Uh, just a very, very quick one. Um, looks like House Bill forty-three fifty-six, um, has been called in committee. This is a bill that focuses on, uh, carpet, um, recyclability. Um, currently, um, you know, the proposal is for um, the funding of a steering committee, which basically would work with the carpet industry to find a way to motivate them, let's say, to do something with the end product, uh, after people are done using their carpet. So, so there is some carpet recyclability that is available, but a lot of it ends up in landfills. So, you know, it's kind of an interesting proposal in that, you know, it'll force the carpet industry to, uh, do something or find a way to do something with the used carpet. Um, but I don't know what that actual solution is or what the cost will be for, for the consumer, cause they'll ultimately end up paying for it. But that is, uh, that's been called, um, in committee, um, and it's, uh, it's obviously something that's important because carpet is ending up in landfill in a big way over here. So that's all I really wanted to mention. And please don't ask me any questions, cause I don't even know what that means.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Um, no questions for Chris?
Oh, please, I, I don't even know what called in committee means. I'm just reading an email. I have no idea what that means. I've gotta research into it and figure out what that means.
I read a piece on that recently. They do it in other states, and I, I wouldn't even begin to try to tell you what I forgot I read, except that my, the, the net, net of it all was they have some really interesting ways to reuse it and recycle it. Where they strip the backing off of the, the, the tweed itself, you know, and one goes one place, another goes another. It's like, that's pretty cool. Keeps it out of the, so, you know.
Yeah, I fully agree, Rita. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, please, go ahead.
No, the recycling of carpet depends on the fiber that it's made of. Uh, there are certain fibers that are reusable, and I don't remember which one, like polypropylene is reused in automotive parts, so they could strip that. And it ends up on your dashboard and you're, in the next car you buy. But there's a lot of carpet fibers that are not recyclable or don't have any mar, market for recyclability, and that's really the issue.
I see.
All right, so yeah, Rita, you're right. They do strip it, it is cool, but it's only a very limited type of fiber. And that's part of the problem. So some states do have that. I've done that in Arizona, so I've, I've taken a bunch of carpet in myself, so I know that.
And that's where the manufacturers come in.
Right, right. Or, or they figure out a way to do something on the backside of it, um, you know, which basically would you know, force higher prices to the initial consumer, you know.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris, for the report. Uh, Trustee Kritzmer?
Um, had a good meeting with Denise today, getting through a whole bunch of little bits and pieces that you'll see coming through when we start reviewing the budget next time. Uh, we have the TIF Joint Review Board, uh, neck, next Thursday, St. Patrick's Day. It's in seven AM, but it is a Zoom meeting. I, the, we're combining, so we will be holding that for both TIF districts. And what gets covered there is pretty rote. It's, you know, reviewing the minutes from the last one, which is a, a year, and actually, it wasn't quite a year ago. I think we had it in June. Uh, going through and saying that the financials for the TIF are the ones that we said they were. And then talking about the projects that occurred during the year. We really didn't have a lot of projects, but we've had certainly discussions on South fifteen and possibilities on the South Gateway. So, anybody wants to get up at seven in the morning and, and listen in, that's what we'll be doing on the seventeenth.
Will there be a Zoom invitation that comes from Sherry for it?
I, it is noticed up. I don't know how the communications are going, but it, it is, it is noticed up, like it is an open meeting like any other.
Okay, great, thanks.
A few people have been notified too, that, that are required to have certified notification, all of the taxing bodies. And by the way, for anybody, um, I've done this three or four times, and we've had a maximum of one actual taxing body show up each time, three different ones.
So conspiracy. Can we bring our brewskis? Or chalae?
Seven eight.
Seven, hang on.
Five o'clock somewhere.
Nitro coffee.
Yeah.
Uh, nothing more.
Trustee Kritzmer does a nice job of running those. I've been attending them all, so does a great job. No, nothing else you said?
Thank you. Thank you. I have nothing else.
All right, perfect. Trustee O'Connor?
No, I do my homework with Jeff.
All right.
They're a mouthpiece. We're good.
Excellent. Um, trustee Micho?
I actually played a hooky to the EDC meeting on Thursday. I was in sunny or actually 50 and raining Cali, California. Um, but I don't know if, if, um, Roger or Greg has anything you'd like to add about the meeting, but I have no report.
I'll turn it over to Roger or Greg.
Roger, do you want to hit this? The, 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 uh, EDC meeting, we turned around and we discussed, um, reaching out to existing businesses. We talked about strengthening our relationship with one of the, uh, corporate headquarters that is in town, Matt Holdings. Uh, so I'm reaching out to them to, you know, make an introduction of myself. Uh, we talked about the various projects that are moving forward, including the storage facility on Lake Cook and 53 that will be going in front of the planning commission. Uh, we talked about the, uh, work on the bagel, uh, bagel shop that's coming in, uh, that's seeking permits or sought permits, uh, over behind, uh, over by the mill pond. Uh, LinkedIn, uh, we're still in that soft, uh, soft launch phase and it's not, um, we've had some good content, but we're not getting as many hits as we would, uh, we would like uh, before we go to a hard launch. So anybody on our board who is on LinkedIn, if you could connect, I know trustee Tanucci already has. I, I don't know who else has, but if you, trustee Barowski, trustee Kritzmeyer, if you can, uh, uh, connect to LinkedIn, uh, Natalie's, uh, working hard to make sure the content stays, uh, current uh, and working closely with, uh, Mike Elliott on that. Uh, the EDC is waiting for the village boards discussion at the strategic workshop on March 19th. Uh, what comes out of that as far as direction, objectives and, uh, uh, potential goals for the EDC as they move forward with, uh, with their plans for the, uh, coming calendar and fiscal year. And that's, uh, that's it in a nutshell. If I could add one quick, uh, point, I, I know the trustees have lots on their table already on their plate. But, uh, the Lake County Commission's report on infrastructure needs in Lake County was interesting in that it had a good SWOT analysis of the, the strengths and weaknesses of the county in general, and a lot of it spoke to what Long Grove strengths are and what Long Grove's weaknesses are. And in terms of framing a discussion about where the village can go or should go, I think that'd be worthwhile reading if you can find your way to it. That's it.
Thanks, Roger. Jenny, did you have any more report? Okay, you're muted, but, uh, okay. Thank you. Good job. Uh, good report there. Uh, thank you, everyone. Um, Kat, trustee Tanucci?
Okay, so I'll, I'll keep this short. Once again, about the water system, just for everybody's information, I just got this from Jeff this evening. We charge $10.50 per thousand gallons of water. Um, a question arose whether there's a minimum charge or a connection charge. Jeff tells me the minimum charge for each building is a hundred dollars per quarter. They can either make that minimum charge by using a hundred dollars worth of water or by using something less than that and then paying the difference between their water usage and a hundred bucks. So there's no actual connection charge. So my general comment and no time tonight to discuss this. I know we try to keep the rates reasonable. Um, with everything going up so fast, I don't know when we reviewed rates last. So that may be something we need to do. And also we might want to consider a connection charge separate from the minimum charge, just like any other public utility has some minimum amount you pay per month, whether you use the utility or not. Looks like we don't have that.
We, we actually do. Oh, go ahead, Ann.
I'm going to say we had a, we had a rate analysis done just before, um, uh, Dave Ledzbiak left. Uh, there was a rate analysis done on that. We're, we're at 10 per thousand. Uh, Buffalo Grove is like five and change, 5.6 or something.
Yeah.
So it's hard to justify an increase. Go ahead, Vic.
So I know Buffalo Grove going up, how much I don't know, but I know someone who lives there, he was told it's going to go up. Go ahead, Vic.
If, uh, we do actually have a connection charge. We aren't charging them for the people downtown because that's what the special service area did. We wrapped the connection charges for all of them into the special service area. So it's being paid over, I can't remember if it's 20 or 30 years, whatever we set it up as.
I might be using the wrong term. When I say connection charge, I mean, like when you look at your electric bill, gas bill, whatever, there's some monthly amount you pay or you use any of their products.
Just a, a system maintenance charge.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, uh, usually for water systems, a, and I work with a lot of different water, uh, system providers. Um, there's not, there's not that type of charge that's accomplished through the minimum user charge. So you're paying X dollars. In our instance, I, I guess it's a hundred dollars a, a quarter or month, whatever our billing period is. Whether you use it or not. So that's, that's really how it works, uh, in the public water uh, system world, a, at least in my experience. The, the reason why you'll see it differently in the public utility, uh, arena is that the Illinois Commerce Commission requires it to be set up in that way, uh, as part of the tariffs that they approve for these different utilities. And they're, they're kind of two different worlds. The, the regulated world and under the ICC is much more, uh, much more defined in terms of how the dollars go with the public water systems. It's usually, you're going to pay an amount whether you use it or not. Um, and, and so that's just a convention that I'm aware of.
So we're not involved with the Illinois Commerce Commission as far as setting rates?
No, we, we don't have to do that because we're a municipality. We are exempt from the Illinois Commerce Commission's regime.
Okay.
So I, I like if you, if you look at an Aqua Illinois, uh, customer, they may very well have that kind of provision in it. Uh, just because that's the convention under the ICC, uh, regime.
Yeah, I'm actually a customer of Utilities Inc. in Northwest Illinois.
Same, same thing then.
Prairie Path now, $24 a month before you use a drop of water.
Right.
Okay.
Kat, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you for your report. Um, village manager Jackson, you have a slot here.
Uh, ju- just a couple of things to report. Yeah, I, I've laid out, uh, a number of items on, on my, uh, village, uh, village managers report and you already have the project list. Um, I am, uh, meeting with that, uh, concerned citizen about climate control solutions. On the 10th, I know there was a trustee that, uh, had wanted to, to be updated on that and potentially attend that, uh, presentation, which is going to be a Zoom presentation. Uh, this is the gentleman who came before the board, um, at the last meeting uh, to discuss, uh, climate solutions. So I'll be meeting with him on the 10th. What else do I have here?
At the Zoom meeting, Greg? That was, it was me that, it was Mr. Jane, right?
Yes, that's correct. And it is a Zoom meeting. Um, I have a meeting with Lake County DOT, myself and the village manager in Buffalo Grove to talk about the Aptikissick and 83 project or the Aptikissick Road project coming in 83 as well as Ireland concerns about Arlington Heights Road and Lake Cook Road and then access to Checker. So that's me, that meeting's coming up on the 23rd. Today I met with the executive director of the Lake Zurich Long Grove Kill Dare, uh, and a bunch of other letters in the, uh, in the logo, uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, to talk about, uh, opportunities to further promote, uh, our business community uh, in Long Grove, not just focusing solely on the, uh, downtown business district, but, uh, village wide. So, uh, the meeting went very well. Uh, I'm going to, uh, attend the next board meeting in April and, uh, see where that relationship may take us. And we are, we've got a lot of things going on, uh, preparing for budget. Uh, and the presentation of that on the 22nd is trustee Tanucci brought up earlier. And that's about, uh, that's about all I have out of this report, so.
And Greg, if you have space on the 10th for the, um, for another trustee to join that meeting without open meetings, would you add my name to that list, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a time set yet?
Um, I'm looking at my calendar now and I need glasses. 10 AM.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, any report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, so I don't know if, um, uh, Director of Operations Rosenquist wants to present the pay warrant or trustee Kritzmeyer wants to talk about it, or anyone have any concerns with it?
I have no comments on it. I reviewed it, but I have no, there's nothing noteworthy that would need note, in my opinion.
Okay.
Denise?
I just have one thing that Greg is looking into. It's that senior center.
Yeah, trustee Tanucci, uh, captured or caught something on the, uh, snow plowing portion of the invoice. We did some breakdowns of, uh, past history dollars, uh, for salt dollars for snow plowing, but uh, aside from that, there was a, uh, notation for senior center or senior uh, sidewalks on one other document, um, as far as being salted and, uh, snow removal. So we're trying to get some clarification on what that is.
That came up last month too, didn't it? Kent?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Set the pathway by Harbor Chase, is that the?
I, I think that's what it is. I just want to get confirmation on it.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yep. Denise, did you have a comment? You, uh, you want to?
No, I was going to say the same thing as Ann, that I had, uh, no concerns there.
Okay. Beyond that is, uh, does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I move.
Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer? Yep.
Move the accepting and approve the bill warrant.
Okay, moved by trustee Kritzmeyer?
Second.
Seconded by trustee O'Connor. And that's a roll call. Michelle, please.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
Trustee Barowski?
Hi.
Trustee Micho?
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci?
Hi.
All right, motion carried. Um, you have before you the board meeting minutes from the February 22nd, uh, 22 board meeting. Any edits or if not, looking for a motion to approve?
I did receive a proposed change from village attorney Filippini. Um, it's in regard to item five, uh, where I said trustee Tanucci moved to approve an amendment. He recommended say stating trustee Tanucci moved to direct village council to prepare the required ordinance to approve the amendment.
Okay.
Um, any other recommended changes? If not, does somebody want to make an, a motion to approve as amended?
Some.
Moved by, uh, trustee O'Connor, seconded by
Second.
By trustee Micho. That's a roll call vote, please.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
Trustee Micho?
Hi.
Trustee Barowski?
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Ed Stane.
And trustee Tanucci?
Hi.
Hey, motion carried. Um, there is no reason for executive session tonight, so um, to the best of my knowledge. So does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Moved by trustee O'Connor?
Second.
Um, I think trustee Tanucci beat you there. At least the voice came first. Please take a roll call.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci?
Hi.
Trustee Barowski?
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Hi.
And trustee Micho?
Hi.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.